Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 25th City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Honorable, call please Christie.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Have approval of minutes from the June 11th meeting?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the bills with Mr. Downing.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move for approval of the bills in the amount of $1,488,255.92, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in your audience has anything they want to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Anybody? Okay. Move on. We've got a couple of reports first. We're going to have Mary Zimmerman, our Communications Manager, is going to give us a report on communications.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Thanks for having me here today. I think it's been two years since I reported to you last. I won't fill you in on all the details because I only have five minutes, but we'll go over some of the highlights of the last, I would say about the last year, maybe a little more. So I want to talk briefly about vision and values. I want to talk about social media and use a case study to kind of showcase what we've been doing there. Talk a little bit about the video program and how that sort of filled in a little bit for our cable television. Doing some work on consistent communication so that people, employees are sort of speaking and writing and designing at more or less the same level. And then just a couple of awards. So vision and values. This comes off of your 2018-2022 strategic plan. And Scott came to staff and said, "Boy, how can we weave this into our everyday life? I want to make this a big thing. This is a big part of the fabric of our city." So we did a couple of things to sort of kick off the vision and values. And at our first meeting when we did that, we gave everybody this pad folio, which we are in love with and we hope you are too. We also made posters with our vision, mission, and values, and they are hanging in every building in the city. This is the police station. We created these photographs for our video, if you recall, our State of the City video, but there again, vision and values and folks holding the postcards we've given to each one of them. So I ran around today, I took this picture of someone hanging their card. I went around and I did a spot check. And I would say about 85% have this up. The others will hear from us. Again, I'll talk a little bit about this video later, but this is our State of the City video, so we wove in our values. In fact, each one kind of introduced a segment of activities that we have undertaken this past year for State of the City, so. And Scott, I think you get this every month from the desk email, and he's been going through all of the values. So we're done with four, only two more to go, Scott. Also, you may have seen this before, but we were invited to send pictures into the municipality magazine for their cover, along with other communities, and she chose all of ours. So this is all River Falls folks wearing hats. So the theme was wearing different hats, and so we were able to weave in our core, some of our core city values there. So we're trying to get out that message, both internally and externally. So update on the city's Facebook pages we have added to, and our latest is the Fire Department, and they're doing an amazing job. So our total likes on all of these pages, and some are duplicated, are over 15,500, which is more than people who live in River Falls. So that's pretty awesome. The city page has the most at this point, and we reached our 4,000 like mark not that long ago. And that is, since January, we've increased likes by a little over 9%, getting to our goal of 10%. So I want to talk a little bit about social media, and as a case study, I'm going to use Snowmageddon and Rainmageddon. There's a lot going on this winter and spring, and we had to work real hard to get the information out, and most folks were watching Facebook for that. So it took a coordinated team of most of the staff members in this room, Mike and Crystal and Kevin and Gordy, sort of being the feet on the ground, to tell us what was going on and kind of report back to the mothership. So I'm very proud of how that went. So I counted up the weather-related posts that I sent. Since January, there were over 30. And we got a little scattered, and Scott said, "Hey, guys, can't you put everything in one place?" So we came up with a Facebook page where we did that. So we all contributed, and we did one each, sometimes each day, and then sometimes each week on what was happening. So people could find out about garbage and parking all in one spot. So that'll be a feature we'll keep. And then we used video to a great, to a somewhat great degree. Mike Stifter was very popular with his snow update, as was Kevin scooping out the, around the hydrant, and that was a GIF. So over 3,500 views. And here's Kevin being Johnny on the spot with the Facebook Live, and this was an outage this spring. 3,300 views. Lots and lots of questions and lots of comments about how people appreciated knowing what was happening in the minute. So this was our, Scott says, biggest fail and biggest success. Monday morning, January 28th, staff met and talking about the cold, this was the super cold at SNAP, and we said, "How can we accommodate folks who are cold and have no place to go?" And we said, "Well, the library, but it's not open 24/7, and what about City Hall?" So we have this lovely building out in Hoffman Park, and we decided that would be a great safe space. No one actually ended up coming, which actually might be a good thing, but people just had an outpouring of love and support for their fellow residents and for the city too. So this is our biggest reach ever, 122,000 people. Our video program is going like gangbusters. We've hired an intern, Josie Hayes. I don't know if you've been able to meet her, but if you haven't, do. So we've done a number of different videos and a number of different formats, which I think fills in some of the holes, if you will, of the cable station over time. This is our HR recruitment video. This is our State of the City. This is when Josie came and we said, "Guess what? We have a project for you." So she did this all herself and in-house. I don't know if you've seen the parking video, but it's a huge hit, 9,600 views. And that came at a request of Michelle from the theater, who said, "People are parking on the street and it's getting really congested on Main Street, so what about Heritage Park? It's wide open." And so we're hoping that this helps alleviate that congestion. Some teasers for Recycling Day, very cute if you saw them. Parks Rec came to Josie and said, "Could you please help us show people how to look at scores for sports teams?" And so Josie did a little how-to, again, very popular, and just a couple of days ago, a hydrant flushing video. So consistent communications, working with staff on some grammar issues, and we're using the Associated Press Style Book, if you know that, and have come up with our nine-page grammar tips. So hopefully, most folks are using that, and we talk about that all the time. We're also working on some design guidelines. This we had done by a professional a couple of, well, last year. So now we're working on, this is sort of for high-print items, but now we're working on design that folks can use in-house. You know, what font style are we using, and what size, and where does the logo go, and that sort of thing. So that's an ongoing process. So I want to end up with some awards we've received this year. Buddy and I and the community and all of us received the American Planning Association Innovations in Planning Award for Kinni Engagement. Recently, we won an Award of Merit for our newsletter in Minnesota, which is pretty awesome. We're proud about that. And then, of course, who can forget the selfie awards featuring our City Council Best Use of Props. Thank you so much for having me. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mary? Thanks, Mary.
Okay, yeah.
Doing great.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Alls I would say is you look very good in that lawnmower.
Yeah.
You can come over to my yard anytime.
Yeah. Okay, next, we're going to have a report from the library. Our library board president, Joyce Breen, and our library director, Tanya Mizalt, will be presenting. Thanks, Joyce.
Honorable Mayor Toland, City Council persons and city staff. I am, as Dan said, and Joyce Breen, the President of the Library Trustees. And it's a pleasure to be here, a year after I was here introducing our new library director, Tanya Mizalt. At our June meeting, on Tanya's anniversary date, the Library Trustees held an evaluation of the past year, and I am proud to say that it was extremely positive. We are so pleased with the way that Tanya has faced the challenges of her first year. One of those was a cut in our budget, and she will explain some ways in which these challenges are being handled. I also want you to know that the Board of Trustees is working on being as knowledgeable as possible about our task as trustees. This handbook, Trustee Essentials, is our bible, so to speak, and we will be attending five webinars shown here at our library the week of August 12th through 16th. A few of the topics include investments, advocacy, and inclusivity. In conclusion, I would call your attention to two brochures, which you have in front of you, which list the activities of adults and youth from May to August. At our River Falls Public Library, I hope to see you there. And I'll turn it over to Tanya.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council members, for allowing me to address you today. Thank you for your generous support of the public library and your service to the community. First, I want to give you some good news. In the winter of 2018, our gallery coordinator, Cole Zaroslik, planned and installed a children's museum that was a hands-on exhibit with parents, which parents loved. For 20 days, an average of 100 people per day were attracted to the exhibit. A lot of people wanted it to return. One mom commented that creating an annual children's creative play space in the gallery would help with parents' mental health and for children's social-emotional development. Additionally, it would provide a needed community space for families during the winter months. So in the spring of this year, Cole and a library intern named Angela Herr submitted a $10,000 Big Idea Grant to the River Falls Community Foundation to buy equipment to establish an annual children's creative play space during the winter months in the gallery. I am happy to report that we have been awarded this grant, and we will be installing that next winter. Second, I want to address the reorganization. I do have some handouts. Granted, they're not thrilling, but I'd rather be brief here and give you an opportunity to look at it later. So in order to respond to budget cuts and increase efficiency at the library, I spoke to all the library staff and the librarians to identify internal strengths and challenges. All the staff at all levels had influence on the reorganization, that is, in a trial period now, and they continue to have influence on the reorganization. The challenges that I observed, first thing, was that it had a very flat hierarchy, and it's not even reflective in the original organization chart. Basically, you had the director and everybody else. So the supervisors did not have a lot of freedom of authority, and the subordinates knew they could go to the director to get what they wanted. The library supervisors did not feel that they had the authority to take charge. Some aides were passively competing to do simple, more mundane tasks in the back workroom rather than work at the service desk, and that's somewhat natural. Some people gravitate to being out with people, and some people gravitate to doing manual work. And there's nothing wrong with either one. Also, I noticed that the librarians were locked at the service desk, like anchored there. And with 21st century libraries, everybody levels up a little bit more, and the librarians are more free to be out in the community and doing other tasks. So I observed that as a problem. And the staff were doing things out of habit because they thought it had to be done a certain way. So some of the solutions we have implemented is to establish a hierarchy of authority based on levels of education and expertise, and that's been made very clear in the nicest way possible. We broke up the aide position so that staff had an opportunity to choose between a lower classification position of more mundane tasks, we call that clerks, or if they wanted to challenge themselves, they could put in for a higher classification position called a library assistant. Library assistants are being trained on reference in children's service desks instead of just the circulation desk. Hopefully, this may create opportunities for librarians to get higher-level tasks done. And we just simply stopped doing some things that didn't need to be done anymore. One example was that, in the past, libraries laminated paperback books so that they would last longer. Libraries have gotten away from that because what happens is the cover lasts forever and the paper doesn't. Pages don't. So paperback books don't cost a lot, and it costs too much in staff time to laminate those books. It didn't make sense. That's just one example. So then I want to go on to addressing the investment in new circulation technology. And the second page, or third and fourth page of your handout has it broken down. It looks more intimidating than it is, but on the left-hand side, there is an estimated cost of annual fees in order to maintain the system that we have. So in short, the gate is 22 years old, and it's, no longer has a maintenance agreement, it's lapsed, and the cost of updating that maintenance agreement is extremely high. The self-check machines are 10 and 11 years old, and they are on an increasing or escalating maintenance agreement. The two self-check machines were, this year, $4,663 to maintain, and it would go up each year. Then there's something called a SIP license, which is Kim's area, that makes those self-check machines talk to other pieces of software that we use. We already had two, so there's the cost for the maintenance of those SIP licenses. We have no RFID desktop. You don't need to worry about that right now. I'll try to explain as I go through. I want to move to an RFID radio frequency identification software. In the past, library material had a hidden thing called tattletape, just what it sounds like. It's something that would make the gates go off. The cost of tattletape is going up, while the cost of microchips in material has gone down, to the point where the microchipping is actually less expensive than the tattletape. So I have here the cost, the annual cost of tattletape for various types of material, and we also had locking CDs. The locking CD cases are extremely expensive. You can go online to learn how to unlock them. Patrons often left frustrated because they forgot to go to the desk to have it unlocked. And basically, we are putting a lot more money and energy into preventing loss than we're actually incurring. So the total annual cost of the way we've been doing business was $8,144. If you look at the other side, that is the projected annual fee in two years after we would move to an entirely automated system with radio frequency tags and something that's called an automated material handling system. I have such a cool video to show you afterwards, but it's possible that I'm just a geek and nobody else will be entertained. So with no updates to the gates and just letting them go as they are, which is what we are doing now and what we would do in the future, as far as I can see, there's no cost. The annual maintenance agreement for three new self-check machines, we just got them today. We're so excited. So we had originally two, and we've added a third one in the children's department, and we're working on getting them up and running, but they have to have a maintenance agreement. The nice thing about this one is it's not an escalating fee. So we could pay $1,260 for a maintenance fee on three machines as opposed to $4,663 on a maintenance agreement for two machines. It's just much cheaper to get out of that old contract. The SIP license goes up a little bit because we have a third machine. There's a little added expense because of something that's called an RFID desk pad, and then the software agreements. Anyway, you get to the bottom, and if you look at the annual projected cost of going automated, it's actually slightly less than what we're doing right now. If you look at the next page, and I want to be really careful with this, is a projection of staff hours saved. I want the board to know that I'm extremely grateful for the, I'm sorry, the council. I'm certainly grateful for how well-funded this library is. In addition, the donations this community pours out for the library are impressive. But my job is to advocate for the library. I am a very transparent person. If there's any questions that you have after this presentation, I would love to go to lunch with you, meet with you in your office, come and see me in my office, and I will try to explain more. So the estimated total hours that we spend currently operating like we were was costing us 2,000 to 3,640 hours, that's the range, per year, and these are estimates. By going to an automated system, we think it will take 380 to 700 hours. I want to be very careful with that information because I'm hoping that that does not create an impression that I want staff cuts. We have already cut 720 staff hours a year since January. Another 240 staff hours have not been filled, pending more information coming from the October 2019 Compensation and Classification Study. If those 240 staff hours cannot be replaced, we will be reduced to staffing by 960 hours a week, which is equivalent to a half-time employee. When comparing staff levels of similar-sized libraries across the state, it is really important to keep in mind that our community is the only one that has a gallery. And that is a great, cool thing, to have a library that's special that way and a community that embraces libraries and arts in the way that River Falls does. But it adds a staff person. And by adding a service point in a totally different level of a building, you add staff. So when you think about comparing apples to apples, you're kind of comparing apples to oranges. The last thing I want to mention is that the time saved with the new technology isn't actually felt in hours, it's felt in seconds. Prior to the reorganization, we had routinely put two staff on the service desk. One staff member would focus on checking in material and would only free up to help a patron if the other circulation employee was busy. By shifting to one employee at the circulation desk, it creates the need for that one employee to continuously shift tasks from checking in books, and Cam, is it 200,000 books a year, materials a year?
Well, we check out about 2,000 things, but then we have to check in that can, so about 400.
400,000, so 400,000 times while serving the public. It's a huge distraction, and then you have people who are being paid a higher amount to do those mundane tasks. It just doesn't make sense anymore with the technologies that are available. So again, we're not going to feel that in hours, we're going to feel that in seconds. So I just wanted to make that clear. So what is an automated material handling system? They are so cool. Automated material handling systems are basically conveyor pults and automation for libraries. By having a radio frequency chip in all the material, you can send material that's being returned down, I just said the word, conveyor belt, and it will check in through the conveyor belt, and if you have the right design and buy from the right company, it takes the material up an escalator, up an incline, and separates the material so that it can check out one at a time and separate those materials into bins according to how they should be shelved. So it can put the nonfiction in one area, it can put the children's area in another bin, it can put the media in another bin, and it separates that and saves the staff time. So the cost of these items initially is high, but the library board has a fund that they are solely in control of, and they're more than happy, as far as I know, to fund that. It's a great investment. It would cost the city nothing. Most of that money is contributions. Then there's, so I want to, I have a clip here that I want to show you. I have post-traumatic technology disorder, so if this vapor locks on me, I might. So I'm hoping that you can hear this guy. If you cannot, I will talk over it. He's a vendor, and he's trying to explain his technology, which is, I've searched through, and he's the best. So he's going to show you what he's got.
Ready?
Questions? I'm going to be doing a quick demonstration of our sorting system for River Falls. We'll start today by demonstrating how a patron would walk up to the machine, interact, drop its materials off. The first thing to know is, our machines are not a one-at-a-time deposit, so when mom comes up during story hour and she might have a bag or an armful of 10, 15 books, she'd literally come up to the old, push them to return as fast as she can. She can do three at a time, she can do one at a time, but what you'll end up happening is, there's a sensor bracket that when she puts it through, it starts the belt up. An induction conveyor of this length, now we only have 10 or 12 items, will hold, or if staff comes up, I can put a stack of 50 items on there. It could be a cart of maybe 100, but it can fill this whole induction conveyor up, maybe one or two items there. And then what you have is, you'll notice on the conveyor, there's an incline, it's used to shingle items. There's little belt flaps on here that help to separate them. We have, and if you walk over here, you'll see underneath here, this little apparatus, these are where we have check-in antennas, and there's three or four of them along the conveyor undersides that are checking items in. As items are passing over it, there'll be about a 99% check-in accuracy rate with seven, three or four antennas on there, so we'll guarantee that everything that comes through that has an RFID tag will check in. Once the items pass from the induction conveyor, they'll go through a series of incline conveyors that are really designed to take your 100 or your 200 items and separate them so that by the time they get down to the sorted conveyor, they enter the sorter one at a time. You have one last conveyor queue with an antenna in it that reads the items one last time to get the sort instructions. From here, you can see they travel on the conveyor, they justify here, and then whatever zone they're determined to go into, you have an actuator that pops up and delivers it into the bin. Sort bins will hold roughly 100, 150 items, 150 items. There's front and two doors so that if the floor is all the way down the bottom, there's easy access in here. The bins are on wheels so that if something falls behind it, they're easy to maneuver out of the way. They're taller, so they're a little bit ergonomically accessible. This is a staff station that will allow staff to process or look at any items that have come into the exceptions bin, or we'd also have holes go into this bin so that if they were to grab an item out of here, put it on an antenna pad on the staff station, if there was a hole, it'd print a slip. That's about it for the description of the machine. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. What size comparison would we need in our library compared to what you see there? Because that looks like it's...
We would... We would, we would, it's more cost-effective to buy more now than to add things later. And in my opinion, we should max out the benefit. We normally sort things into seven or eight carts, and that's how many bins I would order. So, I think that would last well into the future. It's a, maybe a little larger than we need, but maybe not.
So, do we have the space currently?
Yes.
Without having to do any modifications?
Yes. The only modification that would need to be done would be that a deposit would have to be shifted from the circulation desk where people put their returns to the entryway on the brick wall so that the books drop into our workroom instead. That would be the only redesign.
All right.
I had the, I had the pleasure of sitting on the board last winter, last fall and winter, and watching the board and Tanya work through all these issues with new technology and all this new stuff. And it was, it was a pleasure to watch you guys work through this. And Tanya, I thought you did a phenomenal job presenting stuff to the board and, you know, making it very simple for everybody to understand and making it easy to understand that if we do this, we're saving a crap load of money and time. So, you did, you did a good job with that. So, I greatly appreciate.
Talking like a police officer.
I greatly appreciate what you guys are doing over there, the whole board and everybody. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else, anybody have anything else? No? Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you again, and please contact me for lunch.
Are you buying?
I was hoping you would.
We should be buying after that.
Okay, onward and upward here. Number four, the number four item was pulled, so we won't be doing that. Next thing we'll do is we will close the council hearing, open up a public hearing on the annual liquor license and beer license renewals. This is a hearing disposition by each motion for each license. First, I got to take a roll call, make sure our five people are here. First, for Dollar General. There you go. The Kenny Cafe, right in front. Baseball Council. Go. St. Croix Lanes. Okay? And Walgreens. Perfect. Thanks, guys. Okay, so I will entertain a motion. We'll start with the first one. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Is there anybody, is there anybody in the public has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay? We'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I will entertain a motion on the first one.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, would I be allowed to ask my questions?
Oh, yes, please, go ahead.
If I could ask Wes Moss, Trevor Rothstein, and Mr. Dusick to step forward to the podium for a couple of questions I have for each of you?
And these are all new agents this year?
These are new agents, yes. Trevor, you were first, so I'll ask you first. I ask every agent to the same question on the record so that we all understand what the responsibilities are. Do you currently possess a responsible bar, server's license?
Yes, I do.
Do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
Do you understand that if you're not present and there's an alcohol-related violation, you're the one that's responsible?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Mr. Dusick or Wes, it doesn't matter to me, either one. You heard the same question, so do you possess the bar, the responsible servers? You understand the role?
Yes, I do.
And you understand that if you're not present and a violation occurs, it's, you're the one on the hook?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Now, the suspense is gone, Wes, but, you know. So, you possess a server's license, a bartender's certificate?
Yes, sir.
And you understand the role of an agent?
Yes, sir.
And you understand that if you are not present and a violation occurs, you are the one responsible?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Okay.
All the other agents have had that same grilling, so.
Okay. All right, now I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant renewals for the combination Class A and Class A, Class A liquor and Class A beer licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at time of issuance.
Second.
Okay, and then this motion will grant the license to the following. This will be for Dollar General and Walgreens. And do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next one?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we grant the renewals for Class B beer licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Second.
This will be for the Kenny Cafe and River Falls Baseball Council. And I have a first and a second. Other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, move on to number three.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we grant the renewal Class B liquor and Class B beer license contingent upon all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance for River Falls, for the St. Croix Lanes.
Okay. I got a first and a second, and this is for St. Croix Lanes. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the last one?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant renewal of Class C wine licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at time of issuance.
Second. Okay, we got a first and a second, and this will be for the Class C wine for Kenny Cafe and the Baseball Council. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we move on to ordinance 2019-08, amending the official traffic control map. This will eliminate the stop signs on Gulfview Drive at Cut Avenue. We, oh, I'm sorry, we have to move into a public hearing on this. So, we will close the council hearing and move into a public hearing. And is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Nope? We'll close the public hearing, go back into the council hearing, and I will entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of number six, ordinance 2019-08, amending the official traffic control map at Gulfview Drive at Cut Avenue.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments?
I have a question for Gordy. I assume that Public Safety has taken a look at the traffic flow going down Gulfview from east to west and the risks that somebody going too fast in the middle of winter sliding through that far intersection potentially into a home?
We did look at that, and we're comfortable with this recommendation.
Fantastic. I'm still in favor. Thanks.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we move on to consent agenda. First, we have to acknowledge in the following minutes, the EMS Advisory Board from 4-1, the Historic Preservation Commission from 5-8, the Bid Board from 5-14, Utility Advisory Board from 5-20, the Park and Recreation Advisory Board from 5-15, the West Central Wisconsin Bio-Solids Facility Commission from 4-18, 4-25, and 5-2, and Powerful Choices Committee Meeting from 5-9. Next one is a resolution regarding the 2018 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Next one is a resolution for the acceptance of public improvements in Sterling Ponds in the first edition there. And the last one is a resolution regarding utility easement release for Shopko Northside Second Edition. This resolution released two utility easements at lots 10, 11, and Outlot 1, and Outlot 1 for the platte of Shopko on the north side. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pull 10, the utility easement.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number eight, the maintenance report.
I'll take a motion on the rest of it.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items 7A through G and 9.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, we'll start with Mr. Watson, you pulled eight.
I was just hoping that our utility director could give us a, just a little bit of background on the biochemical oxygen demand that was above the range in this report and kind of where we're headed in terms of engineering to take care of that from happening in the future.
Sure. I'd love to do that. And actually, Ron Growth, our wastewater superintendent, is, was kind enough to come out tonight and at our utility advisory board meeting, he gave a nice description of that. So, since Ron came out tonight, I'll let him explain our influent loading and the low oxygen in that and what we're doing to resolve that issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, as Kevin said, it's the influent biochemical oxygen demand, so it's the engineered design. That original design is from 1979, and that was, you know, what the engineers designed the aeration capacity of the plant. Obviously, it's outperformed what they originally designed because their effluent is still good quality, and we get by ninety percent of the time using just one oxidation ditch out of the two. So, it started in, I think it's seventeen, when we first started looking at this with, MSA did a study for us, and we looked at, you know, what is the constriction point here? What's causing our issue? We knew we had taken care of a lot of things, but then you go back and you look at the things you had. And so, it's the aeration system on the ditches originally from 1979. So, then we contracted Strand Engineering, they kind of did, they looked at everything, looked at the different options of improving the aeration. And now, we're in the last phase, and we're actually doing design of a new aeration system. So, we'll get rid of those old rotors that are in there now and go with a diffused aeration grid on the bottom of each ditch. So, probably August, I would think, engineering would be complete, and then we'd be looking at moving into project bidding, so. And then possibly construction like June of next year. We want to do it, our loadings are actually the lowest June, July, and August when school's out, so that'd be the best time to do it, probably construction around the beginning of June, next year of twenty, so.
And, and as you said, the effluent is still within all accepted tolerances, correct?
Yeah, we're well below, we're, you know, we kind of went over a little bit at the utility board meeting, but our effluent limits are thirty, and I think our highest month last year, we were at eight or a nine. So, we're less than a third of our, of our effluent limits. So, in that new design, they did look at it, is when you do a plan like that, the DNR wants you to look at a twenty-year design. So, they did look at a twenty-year design, so this should take us through 2040. The last design actually lasted forty years, so, I mean, we're well into that, we're over, we're past it, you know, it doesn't owe us anything at this point, so.
Great, thank you very much. With that, I move for approval of item number eight on the consent agenda.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, Mr. Morissette, you pulled 10.
I pulled number 10. This came up in the utility advisory board meeting as well, and my question at that point was, we're going to give up these easements, but we're going to get a new CSM, right? And the answer was no, we're not, which is a little out of order from the way we would normally do an easement release in this situation. I'm okay with it, I voted in favor of it at the utility advisory board, but I just want us to be on record that it would probably make more sense as we go forward with these things, when possible, to get a new CSM platted so that we don't have any future issues. I think the reason we need to go forward with this, my understanding, and I understand staff has kind of looked at that variance as well, is that this really has to happen in order for the buyer to get the financing in place. So, it's a chicken and the egg situation, and I think as an accommodation, the city's willing to do so. If for some reason it should fall, fall apart or the sale does not occur, we still have an opportunity to come back in and take it. But I just want to be on record that normally, we should be doing a CSM before we waive these easements out of the way. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve number 10 on the consent agenda, resolution regarding utility easements for Shopko Northside Second Edition.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Can we get some clarification on what a CSM is?
Certified survey map. So, well, I'll let staff talk to that. Go ahead.
Certified survey map, usually it's done with a legal engineer, with a professional engineer signed and recorded, so that's what that is.
Thank you.
That would be done when you have a full platter.
It effectively is putting all three properties into one property, so you're recertifying the.
The platte.
The platte.
Okay, anything else? Questions, comments on that one? All in favor? Oops.
Just a point of clarification that it's the Shopko Northside Edition.
Yes. Did I not say addition? I'm sorry.
No, you said it, but it's the name of the addition. This is not the Shopko property. This is property north of.
Good clarification, probably, at this point.
North of that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, move on to ordinance, this is a resolution requesting an open container exemption. This would be for some businesses on Elm Street are going to, they've already had the okay from the police to close the street during River Falls days on that, I believe it's a Saturday afternoon, and they're asking for a open container exemption from the council for that, during that time. So, I'll take a recommendation or not a recommendation?
I need a point of clarification before I go forward. I would assume that it says they're responsible for security and alcohol regulations, they're going to have security and barriers in place, blocking streets so folks aren't going out of those areas?
If we get on record from Amy and Shooter are here.
I guess kind of the history of my question is, I just wanted to make sure that we're going to have responsible serving and making sure that folks aren't wandering down the street and with their intoxicants, handing them off to kids.
Yeah, I'll be the only licensed establishment serving alcohol in that area. It's from the alley between Amy's Cookies and the Police Department. To Main Street, so that's the 100 block of East Elm Street. Having, we'll have a security person by the, on the Police Department end and also on the Main Street end. And I'll be a rover, roving throughout there while we'll have alcoholic service inside the bar.
So, you'll have designated folks watching in and out of traffic?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, there'll be barricades at, at Main Street and at the alley.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. I move for the approval of number 11.
Second.
I think there's some clarification that we need. There's two resolutions in the packet. One approves the open container and the street closure, one denies the open container and the street closure. I've, which one are we removing?
This, this, this will be a resolution requesting an open container exemption. This is, that's all, that's all we're talking about.
Okay.
This is just for open container. The police have already authorized the closure.
The street closure, yep.
So, this is resolution right here, authorizing the open container exemption.
So, if you're saying is that we need to strike out the word denies in there in order to motion for approval?
Well, there's a new resolution that I asked, we put forward that we, essentially, we're going to just address, the chief of police has the authority to close the street, he's already done that. So, we don't really need to act on that, I don't think.
No, we're not acting on the closure.
So, all we're really acting on, in my opinion, is whether or not we're going to allow the open container.
Open container, right.
So, what's our motion here? That we approve?
I'm moving for the approval of the open intoxicant and as written in this ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
Questions or comments? Go ahead, Hal.
I'm just trying to think how this grows over time, like from one street to the next, year after year, and how widespread this is going to become. So, is this the first domino to fall during the middle of the day with open containers during River Falls days in the middle of the day or not? You know, that's kind of one of my, that's my main concern, I think.
It's a concern I share. I have no doubt that, you know, it can be run very well, but I do think there's a slippery slope, and we have a lot of open container variances over the course of the year for big events. I'm concerned that, you know, this, the businesses on Elm Street may decide to do it this time. Pretty soon, we've got businesses on other blocks saying, we want it for this specific date, and pretty soon, we have a hodgepodge of requests for this. So, it gives me pause.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
So, we're looking at this as really viewing it as a patio setting for Shooter's Pub, more so than kind of a block party approach to it. So, I know that there's been other ordinance, other times during events where patios have then been able to put up the orange fences and such in order to have open container out there. So, we're asking that that's what it'd be viewed as for this instance.
And that's where my questions stem from. I was a huge proponent on making sure that a lot of our establishments, when they have open patios and they have any kind of a patio structure that they have. structure, that they have someone licensed on duty maintaining visual as well as some kind of barricade so people can't come and go, especially the underage consumption and stuff like that. And that's why I asked the questions I did of making sure that there are people coming, monitoring coming and going as well as some sort of barricade. And he indicated on record that that's what he's looking to do.
Okay. The reason this issue came up is due to the fact that the Chamber, the city or whoever is not having the kids carnival. This issue came up, we are trying to create a kid-friendly environment. We're having a child, 12 and under beanbag tournament. That's why the, the street's being blocked off. We've got a bouncy house?
Bounce house.
Bounce house.
Face painting.
Face painting, hair, crazy hair for kids.
Dunk tank.
Dunk tank. We're, we're trying to create family-friendly environment and also such as a patio setting, because we're including also in our beanbag tournament, Johnny's and Lazy River, which both have patios. But we'll be shuttling back and forth without open containers, just in our setting, but where we could kind of be an equal or level playing field where somebody could, on the adult tournament portion from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, they could go out and have a beer in their hand in a, in an authorized cup.
So, that brings up a follow-up question. Some of these open variances that we have downtown and that are approved events, you know, the security is sometimes lax and we see people walk out of the establishment with a cup. And sometimes you see someone from the bar come about after them and tell them no. Sometimes you don't. But you've indicated that you're gonna have folks stationed at the entrances and not allowing that.
Either side, correct.
Okay.
Dan, can I clarify something real quick? You just said from 3:00 to 6:00.
That's when the adult tournament is.
Okay.
So, not what's in front of us. What, we've got 11:00 to 7:00, so we're being asked to act on-
From 11:00 to 7:00.
-open container from 11:00 to 7:00.
If you want to do 11:00 to 7:00, we'd gladly-
That's the entire event.
That's the entire event.
Yep.
The adult beanbag tournament is only from 3:00 to 6:00.
So, are you asking for the entire day or just 3:00 to 6:00?
Ah, 3:00 to 6:00, please.
Okay.
In which case, may I make a motion to, a friendly motion to amend the resolution to indicate from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM?
I'll second.
And that's specifically for the open container portion of the amendment, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that.
The concern I've got is, the concern I've got is that this is during River Falls days and I'm a little concerned that we don't have, I, I don't expect a problem, you know, I, I think you run a good operation. I'll go on record as saying that. But if there is an issue, I'm concerned about the, the amount of, the amount of staff that we've got, reserves and on-duty police support for it. So, I'm a little, I'm a little torn here about, about it. And I do also, as Watson, as Mr. Watson said, have, have some concerns about what happens next year, what happens when, you know- Well, hopefully- -River comes in and says, hey, we want to close off that section down there and, you know-
Yes, sir.
It just starts to snowball.
The reason this whole issue came up was we're, we're trying to create some family and kid-friendly stuff due to the fact that the kids carnival was canceled. So, we're trying to bring people into town, bring families into town and give them an alternative to, you know, an alternative in River Falls days. So, for our businesses.
Are you anticipating that this will be another request again next year?
If the kids carnival's canceled, yes, sir.
I'd be in favor of it next year for the same reason.
That, that's my biggest concern about all this is-
This is why we brought this forward. It's because the, due to the, the kids carnival's canceled, you know, the fire department during the day runs the water fight in the morning. And that's, you know, right up the street. But other than that, there's not a lot for families to come to town for, other than the music or the, the food court or see a band.
My biggest concern is you're advertising this as a family fun day for kids.
That, that's 11 to-
We don't need, we don't need, I understand and that's great that you guys want to do something like that. And you got the bar entrance right there, so I don't know why we have to have the open container outside when you're supposed, when you're trying to, when you're trying to convey for kids to be there playing all the kids games and that.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm a little, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm concerned about.
The only portion we're asking is 3:00 to 6:00 during the beanbag tournament.
I know, but if you're pushing for kids, they're still gonna be there with their parents.
Exactly.
I think an, I think an argument, if I might add, is we allow many full downtown open containers.
Yep, but they don't advertise, they don't advertise as family fun.
A lot of them are. The Bed Races are family fun, St. Bridges. Yeah, there's, there's a ton of events downtown. It's, the Chamber is a family fun event. It isn't a knock them out, drag them out, whack them all event. That's not what the Chambers ever come before us. So, I think this is in line with any other open variance that we've ever allowed.
Like you said, it's up to you guys. That's just my concern. That, that's the only thing I'm concerned about.
And additionally, the, the, the kid-friendly fan, like the kid-specific events run from 12 until 4. The event as a whole runs 11 to 7, just because we have both the juniors and the seniors cornhole tournament going. But as far as the dunk tank and the bounce house and the face painting, all of that ends at 4:00 PM. And so, which then most of the participants on the block will then be adults at the time we're asking for the variance.
I call the question.
Mr. Mayor, I want to, I think we need to clarify a couple of things. First of all, motioner was, was council member Gania, second, or was council member Page? So, council member Page would need to accept the friendly amendment. Do, do you?
I do.
Okay. So, then I think we've got the motion on the table and-
Gania, too.
And you accepted the friendly amendment, correct?
Yes, and I call a question.
And then-
Our vote.
It's up to you to run if you want. It's me to talk or not.
No, I, I, I expressed my concern about it being, but question's been called, so.
We have to vote on calling the question.
Yeah, we gotta vote on calling the question first. So, all in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
If nobody, if you got, if nobody's got anything else to say? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment first, which was 3:00 to 6:00, 3:00 to 6:00 PM for the open container.
You can vote. If you'd like, you can go and vote on as amended.
Oh, we can, okay. Okay. Okay, so we'll vote as amended, not 11:00 to 7:00, but 3:00 to 6:00 for open containers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we'll move on to Administrator's Report.
Thank you.
Yep.
You've received a written report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Just a couple reminders. The School District of River Falls has invited the public at 5:15 on June 27th to open the 1927 time capsule. I believe there's information available through their social media regarding bricks from the building, but I don't have that handy.
I believe they said they would be giving them away free during River Falls days.
Limit of five.
Limit of five.
July 11th through 14th of River Falls days. Fireworks this year are dusk at Hoffen Park on July 11th. That's a Thursday. That's one change to the event. Medallion hunt is at 3:00 PM on Friday, July 12th. Parade is at 6:30 PM Friday, July 12th. There's more information on River Falls days on rfcamber.com. The city is planning to have a parade unit. Any council members that are interested in, in joining us and their families may do so, just let me, my office know that you're interested and we can get you another t-shirt if you need one and a bag full of candy to, to be. We also still are looking for a couple actors. If you're interested in playing parts that won't be mentioned on the video, but if you're interested, we do have some, our theme is no wipes in the pipes. So, is there any questions I can answer for you?
If I may, I'd just like to thank the folks that came out to Wells Park in District 2, to the cookout conversations on June 20th. It was a fun event, although the, the rain gave us a little scare at the beginning. It lightened up and we had some nice hot dogs and some ice cream with, with some families that came down. And appreciate the mayor and some of the council that came out as well.
Anybody else got anything? Okay, move on to Comptroller's Report.
Yeah, you caught me off guard. Yay, okay. Comptroller's Report for May 2019. General fund revenues through the end of May were $4,535,882. Revenues in the month of May include $228,044 for Rural Fire Association and $106,951 for school liaison officer, with the school district pays half of the cost of that particular officer. Expenditures for the same period were $3,781,080 or 35% of expenses for a net of revenues over expenditures of $754,802.
Next, I'd like to make one appointment. I'd like to reappoint Joyce Spring to the Library Board through July of 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I move your appointment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.